Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the Bangor School Committee regular meeting, and if you please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, and we have some recognitions of the main seal of biliteracy. Superintendent Tager.
Yes, thank you, Chair Austin. Highlighting the importance of multilingualism, the Seal of Biliteracy recognizes student achievement in language learning. Students who are proficient in English and in an additional language earn the seal of biliteracy by demonstrating their skills on national assessments. This award becomes part of the students' transcripts and gives students an edge for their post-secondary studies or future careers. We have a number of students that receive this award, and I am very thankful for the students that are here because they are all seniors. So thank you very much for coming today. I didn't know who would come. And I'm going to call your names in a minute. If the school committee wants to come up front, we'll call names and then pass out some certificates. So when they call your name, if you'll come up and then before you do that, school committee and folks that are watching online or that are here, I want you to know that this seal of biliteracy, ten percent of the seal of biliteracies that have been awarded in the state were earned by Bangor High School students. So the whole state, ten percent came from Bangor. And this biliteracy is a national recognition that is good for up to eight college credits. So we're very proud of each of you, and thank you again for being here, knowing that you already graduated. We appreciate you being here today. And we have students that have earned biliteracy in Spanish, French, Chinese, and American Sign Language. So in Spanish tonight, we have Beckett Mundell Wood. Please come up. And Beckett, if you want to stay up here, we'll get a picture at the end. So please stay up here. Also in Spanish, we have Kelsey Hope. In France, we have Kate Busco. And also in France, we have Caroline Sada. You can go right in the front. Take picture.
Okay, on to adjustments to the agenda. Are there any?
Yes, there's one. It would be letter D, one B, photocopy or release.
Okay, can I get a motion, please? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you. On to public comments, and as a reminder, as always, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting, and it requests that the speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage the speakers to review school committee policy AC, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. And before starting, please state your name and place of residence. And do we have any public comments tonight? Being none, thank you. We will move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. The first action item is a DEIB letter. Superintendent Tager.
Yes, I'm recommending approval of the DEIB intolerance letter to be placed on our website and social media.
Can I get a motion, please? So moved. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Next, we have photocopier lease.
I'm recommending approval of authorizing the photocopier lease purchase agreement with municipal leasing consultants.
Motion, please? Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have several informational items. The first is a National History Day update.
My pleasure to bring up Caroline Sada and Kate Busco, who will update the school committee on their trip to the National History Day contest in Washington, DC. They represented Maine and were recognized as an outstanding affiliate entry. Please come up.
Move this table so I can.
Well, thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see everyone again. I'm Caroline, as you know, and we're here to present about National History Day. And we've been recognized many times for our individual successes at National History Day. But today, we'd like to elaborate more on its importance in our education. So just to give a brief overview of what NHD is, it's a months-long research project that's very primary source-driven, and it's about any historical topic that a student might be interested in. The project is centered around a theme to help guide your research, but the subject matter is completely open. And ultimately, the research turns out to be a documentary, a paper, a performance, an exhibit, or a website. And so it's very open-ended and allows for a lot of student creativity.
And I'm Kate Busco. We started our National History Day journey at Doughty with Mrs. Kennedy, who was incredibly passionate and made National History Day an assignment for the entire class. It was a mixture of excitement, stress, and a lot of work. It was not something that I ever would have attempted without the support of a teacher or the school. But Mrs. Kennedy's passion for it really kept us working even when there were challenges. I received an eighth grade first place for my group documentary on the internment of American citizens at Santo Tomas.
And I got third place for my paper on Hannibal Hamlin's vice presidency, and we had plenty of other winners in our class as well.
If I had to summarize what National History Day did for me that year, I would say it taught me collaboration, corroboration, creativity, and resilience. We learned to use library resources, archival footage. We learned how to conduct interviews, navigate the web, and how to analyze perspectives in our various sources. And this was a very rewarding experience for all of us, those who won things and those who did not.
And so after all of this intense support in middle school, both Kate and I continued on into high school to do NHD. And we, our specialty really became documentaries, and you can see some of the documentaries we each have made. Eventually, we joined together as a group for our projects. And at Bangor High, the NHD club is a club, so it's very independent, and you have to have a lot of motivation to be able to complete these projects. But for me, because I'm so passionate about history and humanities, I found that I really wanted to undertake this kind of project. And there was a lot of value in not just making NHD projects and going to the competitions, but also for prepping in research for other classes and for preparing me for my Humanities Academy capstone that I ultimately did in senior year.
For me, NHD really forced me to think critically about my interests. When I had to consider what I wanted to study after high school, I thought back to what I had chosen to study when I had this open-ended research project, and that helped me decide that I want to study environmental science and journalism. But without the freedom in this project, I don't think I would have that insight into my interests.
And so this year, Kate and I made it to the national competition, but what was really special about it was that it was in person after a couple of years of the pandemic. Not being able to be in person. And so this experience was really important to us, and we are just going to share a bit more about it.
We got to visit the Supreme Court, the House of Representatives, the Library of Congress, and we were able to meet all of our representatives and speak to them personally about our project, which was very inspiring for us to see that they were willing to engage with us and were interested in hearing our ideas. NHD in general has opened doors. I have so many contacts from people that I've interviewed, and I've learned how to be confident in asking people to tell their story. Many people want to tell their story. You just have to ask. And really learning how to navigate challenges very independently helped teach me the skills that I still use in my classes and I'm going to use once I move on to my next step in my education.
And so the reason we're presenting this to you today is that we want other students to have an opportunity like this. You know, the research in the humanities is very important. And we've noticed that at the middle schools, they have been doing a lot of research in the sciences with Science Fair and Invention Convention. But National History Day has kind of died out there, and we really believe in a balance between the humanities and the sciences. And at the national competition, Kate and I got recognized for an outstanding entry for the state of Maine, and it was a proud moment for us to represent the state of Maine from Bangor High School. But it's not just about the awards at the competition. It's also the shared experience. And I remember in eighth grade how close our class became because we all had to undergo the project and we all had to meet the same challenges, but work with each other to get through them.
Bangor once held its own at competitions, and the pandemic has since hurt our numbers, but we really believe that it can come back. Currently, only Cohen and Bangor High are involved in NHD, and they've done well, but we believe that there should be an equal opportunity for students at Doughty. We are working with Mrs. Patterson to revive it at the middle school level, and we hope that the school district will be as enthusiastic about this opportunity as we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just to say, congratulations. You've both been kind of frequent flyers at school committee over the last couple of years and gonna miss you both, and just good luck to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much and congratulations. And just to Superintendent Tager, I would just say, you know, anything that the school committee can do to support JFDS pursuing something, you know, let us know.
Thank you.
Congratulations once again. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
This was a late addition to the.
Okay.
Financing attorney. Right in about the financing of the vendors and copiers.
Okay, do you mind reading it in? Do we need to read it in or no? No.
No. Probably like they did at the city council, they they read down to about here and.
Okay. Okay, I can do that right now. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to track or do we need to make a motions accepted?
I don't know. Let's ask, let's ask. It's the copiers and Jerry heard from our attorney that we should read in the purchase agreement. So I don't know if that's something that we should have a motion first, or do I just read?
Motion to accept. That's what I.
Okay.
So then he'll read it and then we'll vote on it.
So you want to make a motion to vote authorizing?
Sure. Can I get a motion to vote on authorizing the copier lease purchase agreement? All in favor?
I passes seven zero. Yep, I sure will. Bangor School Committee vote authorizing copier lease purchase agreement. Whereas the Bangor School Department FY two thousand and twenty-four school budgeted budgeted contemplates the purchase and installation of copiers and related software. The copiers and whereas the school committee has determined to enter into a lease purchase arrangement with municipal leasing consultants to finance the purchase and installation of the copiers. Now therefore, be it hereby voted by the Bangor School Committee as follows.
Can I get a motion? All in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you, Jerry.
Next, we move on to report of resignations.
Reporting the following resignations, Judith McCollack, music teacher, James F. Doughty School, Catherine Walters, special education teacher, William S. Cohen School, Carmen Curry, special education teacher, Bangor High School, Michael Hersam, freshman football coach, Bangor High School.
Thank you. Now we have the report of retirements.
I am reporting the following retirement, Michael Corniel, math teacher, Bangor High School.
Thank you. On to business action items. We have one action item, and it's the minutes of the regular meeting of June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a motion? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have personnel, and we have nominations of an administrator.
I'm recommending the following administrator nominations for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year with the one-year probationary contract. It's my pleasure to nominate Christie Charette, principal and McKinney Vento Coordinator, Fourteenth Street School, and Christie is present.
Well, and we asked previously for for our wonderful principal. Oh, sorry about that, but we would love to know more about you. Yes.
So a little bit about myself?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I worked in Bangor for eleven years. Yeah, okay. So I worked in Bangor for eleven years before leaving last year for an administration, administrator position out of district. So I'm very excited to be back. I was literacy coach at Mary Snow, Fruit, Fairmount, and Fourteenth Street. I'm very excited and grateful to be here. I can't wait to support students, not only in their academic growth, but their social and emotional development also. So in this last year, I was trained in P B I S as a P B I S coach and then in restorative practices. So I had a lot of experience implementing those at the last school that I worked at. And it was nice to do that restorative piece with kids and proactively teach them about, you know, who that impacts when you do something, what can we do to make it better, and then tomorrow's a fresh start. So let's try again and implement the strategies that we talked about. So.
Thank you.
And can I get a motion, please? Any questions, discussion? No, all in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have nomination of a teacher.
I'm recommending the following teacher nominations for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year with a one-year probationary contract. Allison Estes, grade five teacher, Mary Snow School; Sean Kenniston, math teacher, James F. Doughty School; Catherine Guernsey, school nurse, district, one-year position.
Motion, please? Questions or discussion? No, seeing none, all in favor?
Passes seven zero.
Next, we have extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending committee approval for extra duty assignments for the school year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Kathy Rice, B softball coach, James F. Doughty School; Caleb Tipton, A baseball coach, James F. Doughty School; Chelsea Lowe, point five student council advisor, James F. Doughty School; Matt O'Connell, point five student council advisor, James F. Doughty School.
Motion, please? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Next, we have financial reports for June bids and quotes.
Recommending approval of the June bids and quotations report.
Motion, please? Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Next, we have second reading of revised policies, and we'd like to take them all together, please.
Okay, I'm recommending second reading of revised policies, revised policy G B E A, bloodborne pathogens, revised policy G B E B, staff contact with students, revised policy G B G B, workplace bullying, revised policy G B I, staff gifts and solostation. Revised policy G P J, personal records and files, revised policy G C B C C, tax sheltered annuities, and revised policy I C A, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, school calendar.
Do you have a motion, please? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Okay, next we have donations, or do we?
We do.
Okay.
It's gonna be.
Oh, remember John Drew?
All right, to all schools from Mo's Original Barbecue, gift cards for families having a total dollar value of one thousand dollars to Abraham Lincoln School from Donald Sawyer, a granite bench for the garden in memory of Derek Sawyer, having a total dollar of two thousand six hundred and ten to James F. Doughty School from the American Cribbage Congress, ten custom cribbage board sets having a total dollar value of six hundred dollars, and to Bangor High School from Elizabeth Coin, a violin having a total dollar value of one thousand ninety-nine. We appreciate and thank you.
Absolutely. Motion, please.
Second?
All in favor?
Seven zero.
Next, we have introduction items and several first reading of revised policies, and we'd like to take those together.
Okay, you got it, Chair. I'm recommending first reading of revised policies, revised policy G C B D, employee leaves and absences, revised policy G C B D A, family and medical leave, revised policy G C C A, recruiting and hiring of administrative staff, revised policy G C D, professional staff hiring, revised policy G C E B, student teaching and internships, revised policy G C F A, employee social media privacy, revised policy G C L, professional staff development opportunities, and revised policy G J L G, admission of homeless students.
Motion, please? Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Passes seven zero. Thank you.
Moving on to committee updates. Any comments or questions from the committee? Remember Sprague?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say welcome to Christie. I got a chance to talk to her briefly before. It's nice to have somebody who's got experience in Bangor and then had gone to do another job, and I'm sure you learned and grew through that, but nice to have you back in Bangor. And I was talking with her before, and not only does she live in Bangor, she lives in the neighborhood of the school district, and you should have privacy and all that, but I'm sure kids, once they know, love that. And it's kind of like old-fashioned a little bit. I grew up a few houses down the street from my first-grade teacher, Maria Brannas, here in Bangor. And it was like really nice to know that she was close by, invested in the neighborhood, invested in the community. So welcome, good luck. You got good people on both sides of you and lots of people in the department to help you on your way, but happy to have you back in Bangor.
I echo the congratulations as well. Happy to have you on board. Members threat.
And this probably would be a question for Principal Butler, but maybe Superintendent Tager, you could, you could ask him. The donation of the violin made me think of it. Actually, there's a colleague of mine is trying very, very hard to get rid of or donate a grand piano. And I didn't know if Bangor High School would have any need for something like that or not, but just wanted to.
I'll be happy to ask the question.
Okay, thanks. I'm not sure. I don't know much about pianos.
Other comments or questions? No? No, and just, you know, for those who don't know at home, our budget was approved by city council this, this week, so we're really, really excited about that. And we thank city councilors for, for supporting our budget. I don't believe we have any reports. Do we? Representatives' reports? I don't think so. It's summer, we're and we don't have any student committee member updates. Final, actually, not, not yet. I'm jumping the gun here. Informational items. We have several important dates. We have Wednesday, July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting, seven P M, council chambers. Wednesday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, regular, regular meeting, seven P M, council chambers. And Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting, seven P M, council chambers. And now final call for questions or comments. Seeing none. Adjournment. Can I get a motion, please? All in favor?
Passes seven zero.
Adjournment.